Good evening, folks. It being Cinco de Mayo, May 5th. This is a planning commission. It is 6:30 PM. Is there a motion to open the meeting?
I make a motion to open the meeting.
Give us a second. All in favor?
Aye.
If you'd be kind enough to introduce yourself from my right this way.
Dave DeRoch.
Mark Francois.
Brian DeChamps.
Mark Santorizio.
Rick Alex.
Doug Mantle.
With that, we're not going to do the minutes. We're going to start off with the first public hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, from Bradford Street.
With that, this meeting is held in accordance with Chapter 41, Section 81-T. It also is on YouTube. With that, Article 25 Bradford Street rezoning public hearing. Would you like to speak on that? Please start. Folks, on public hearings, here's how we're going to do it. We're going to tell you the article. We're going to read the article. We're going to have the questions for the planning board. Any of the gentlemen on the planning board get to ask questions. And then after that, anybody in the audience or the public can ask questions. All understood? Thank you very much.
All right. So I'll just give a pretty quick instructions what bylaws and what it's going to do. So we'd be looking to rezone lots 482 and 534 on official NADAS map 15. Essentially, we'd be moving these from residential A zoning district over to the residential village town district, which would allow 10 to 13, potentially 10 to 13 conforming lots. This is the area of town that has pre-existing water and sewer connection points. However, the water line, to my understanding, is about 75 years old. So there would need to be, in my recommendation to the planning board, any future development in this area should require professional water and sewer tests to be performed by a third-party engineer. Additionally, I know there was a junkyard that used to be on the property located back there. There's been some questions about contaminated soil. We do have limited capability and work we're able to do. That's another board within town. I understand DEP has a situation under control and the current developer that's working over there is working with DEP to address those issues. But other than that, this is to create 10 to 13 potential buildable lots. This is new growth for the town of Cushinget, something that's much needed at this point.
That's it. Gentlemen on the board, any questions? Please feel free. Nothing? Audience, anybody, public? Would you like to say anything? Please. If you'd like to guess, can you make it that far, Jamie? Just introduce yourself. Tell us what you'd like to tell us.
Hi, my name's Jeremy Marinelli. I live on Pembroke Avenue. And I'd like to talk about the traffic on that road being narrow through James Street down. And they want to put more houses over there. What do you guys think about the traffic congestion over there?
Gentlemen on the board, want to answer that one, Doug? I don't think they did a traffic study on that.
No, we have no traffic study on it. But it already being residential, increase 10 to 13 units. I mean, very well, we could have, if this does get approved, then eventually it does go through the planning process. When they're looking to do anything, we can have a traffic study completed. However, in terms of the foot traffic, if there's anything that needs to be done for the roadway to increase development, that would be up to the development at that point. And that would go through the planning process, but...
Okay. Also drainage and wetlands.
That's usually done by the soil or conservation?
No, if you're done by the conservation commission, if this was approved.
That is a dead-end road, am I correct?
At a certain point, yes.
No, I just, another notification that I probably...
That's just the contamination. As far as it being cleaned up, where did the contamination soil go?
We don't have authority over that. That is up to DEP.
Okay, so we have to ask the DEP where the soil went to find out where the contamination went?
Well, any soil contamination that has to be trucked off-site has got to be done according to DEP regulations. You can't just take contaminated soil, dump it in somebody's backyard.
Can I speak up, Rick, so everybody else?
I'm sorry, you can't just take contaminated soil off your property and dump it in, dump it anywhere you want. If it's a known contamination problem, then it's going to be done according to DEP regulations. They're the ones who regulate the disposal of hazardous waste.
Okay, I spoke with him about it. They removed soil for three days off the property, trucks of soil. And the DEP came down and said, hey, you guys have taken soil away from here. And they told me I had to go to the town. So they've been taking soil off the property for three days to clean out the whole spot. Before they even soil tested, they put fresh stuff down. And the fresh stuff was put down, and then they hired a guy to do the soil testing. So this was done all, you know, under the radar.
The best thing to do is for you to contact DEP and tell them what you observed. Any, you know, if that's your observation, you should let them know that if we say it's third-party, you know, well, he's, you know, somebody said that there was soil being trucked off the site and no testing done until fresh soil had been put down. It's better if you contact them directly.
Okay, I have pictures and video of it.
That's, yeah, don't doubt you what's over there. But that's, those are the people to bring it up with.
All right, thank you.
How long ago was that done?
October of 2020. And they put the test in, I believe it was the 29th, they filed paperwork on the 30th of October, the state DEP guide. So for three days before that, they were removing soil from the property and bringing fresh soil in.
I was told that there's a licensed site professional that's overseeing whatever's going on on that property.
Yeah, he came in after they did, after they removed the soil and put fresh stuff. And then they tested two holes on video that I got from video. The hole's fresh. They went in and tested the holes that they brought fresh soil to.
Am I allowed to speak on this?
One moment. One at a time. We'll be able to speak, sir, no problem. That's it. Any other questions?
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you all.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, Doug.
Yep, right ahead.
The next street parallel...
Speak up a little bit, Jamie, it's a little...
The next street parallel to Pembroke, is that a developed street?
Nelson Ave.
Yeah, does it go as far as Bradford?
It does, but it doesn't connect through to Bradford. Bradford doesn't connect through their properties.
Right, but if 534 is changed and somebody will have to develop Bradford...
Somebody would have to...
We could force them to make the connection to Nelson.
Yes, and that would have to go through as a subdivision of land. Across the street, a button to quarry, you'd have to go through as, could go through as an ANR because it was a pre-existing before subdivision control.
See, what I'm getting at is that, you know, connecting streets is good for fire protection. Rather than having a dead-end street, it also gives people two avenues to come and go. So that's what I would be looking for if 534 forms, develops.
But Nelson is on the Belanger Side Street.
You'd go through Bradford to connect to the next street, and then we get circulation and improve.
Yeah, I think there's a garage that's on the paper road over there.
That'll have to be addressed. But as one member, I'm in favor of this type of growth. We need as a town to find a new revenue stream, or our taxes are going to go up 2.5% every year. They literally do now anyway. But if we don't find other places for growth and revenue, tax revenue, then, you know, we're stagnant, you know? We don't have a commercial, you know, development in town, a big commercial development like you see in Dartmouth and Vane. You know, so this is where we can, where the sewer is. So that's why I would support something like this. Any ways we can create revenue in the town, we should look at that.
And by cutting through, making the cut-through on Bradford, I agree with David, it would alleviate a lot of the traffic on Pembroke if there's another way in and out and not just a dead-end at the end.
Yeah, but then, like you said, if you go to that Nelson Street, there's a garage on...
Again, that would have to be...
On Belanger at the end there. That last house has a garage on the paper road.
That would have to be addressed.
Gentlemen, you're all set? Would anybody else like to speak, pro or con?
Yeah, I'll speak.
Please come up and introduce yourself, sir.
Hi, I'm Jeff DiTerra. I'm a developer in Bradford. Just to clear up some things for Jamie here, we have an LSP involved. He did get involved a little after the fact, but he, we had already testing that we were given with the property, and it was tested down on the property. And the parcel that Jamie was talking about was deemed clean. So then, after, you know, DEP showed up, road was approved, everything was done, it was clean. Then when DEP came, they didn't shut us down. They said, you're right. I showed them all the paperwork I had. Long story short, anyway, I stopped exactly what I, I stopped everything I was doing. And we hired an LSP and we did a grid, lost a whole entire property. And that whole area that we're working in, there was one little spot that ended up having, it was like a four-by-four area. So any of the soil that was removed previously was left, we let DEP know. We did samples, we did everything we were supposed to do by the book, and everyone was notified about it, and everything come back and was fine. The area we do have to clean up is on the other side. That is the reason, you know, part of the reason, you know, we're trying to clean up, clean up the old junkyard, bring up the property values to everyone around it. We're just trying to do a good thing in town, you know what I mean? And clean up something and create some houses and keep it what it is, you know? That's really all. I'm not sure how much clearer I can be about that. I think it's been mentioned multiple times. So we're doing everything by the book, and we're just trying to improve the area. But that's all that comes out.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
Right ahead, David.
Just curiosity, LSP, how deep do they test?
We did, I mean, we were like eight feet down. But it was just, it's in the first one to four inches. You know, it's really all it is.
Those are all core samples, correct?
No, no, that's all. It was, yeah, there was samples and tons of samples everywhere, A, B, C, everywhere. They had all instruments. I don't know a very lot about it, but yeah, it was pretty complex, you know what I mean? And then all the soil piles that were in the back that were stocked by a little earlier when it was all alone, I mean, we did multiple tests and, you know, all of them came back fine. You know, and since then, we've just been doing whatever the LSPs direct us to do and DEP, you know? And they're sending us, you know, we're just doing it by the book. So just so everybody knows, it's being done correctly.
For the record, who is the LSP or company?
It's Riverhawk, Bill Kenny from Riverhawk.
Okay.
So, yeah, okay. And that's all.
Gentlemen, any questions? Would anybody else like to speak, for or against? Do we have to make a motion on this to be accepted? Is that correct? Actually, this goes to town meeting. Is this a two-thirds vote?
This is a two-thirds vote.
So you can go to town meeting, which is next Monday, am I correct?
Yes.
And you can vote on the article, and it has to pass by two-thirds.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion that we endorse this article. It's a good town meeting.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye, unanimous, five-four. With that, I thought you wanted to say something. That's okay. With that, we have to go out of this public hearing?
Yes.
And back into regular meeting? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to go back into, from this public hearing into a regular meeting?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, five-zero. With that, we don't have anything, we don't have to do the minutes, we'll go right into the second Article 24, is that correct?
Yes.
Is there a motion to go from regular session back into a public hearing for Item 2, Article 24, temporary moratorium on the siting of large-scale ground-mounted solar installations?
Oh, do I smell moved on that.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. With that, Doug, would you please be kind enough to read it?
So essentially, what the solar moratorium is going to do is going to put a 180-day, essentially freeze on any approvals for solar moratoriums in the town of Cushinget. Currently, we have 19 approved large-scale ground-mounted solar arrays. I think we've seen an influx over the past two years and even beyond that of solar arrays, and we have to be prepared for more coming in. The clearcutting of numerous acres of trees, the ways we're going to screen these, how we're going to protect the community from these essentially, because they're going to be the people looking at it on a day-in, day-out basis. So essentially, this is putting a 180-day freeze on any approvals for solar arrays. This should give the planning board time to do the research and be able to adopt an official large-scale bylaw for the town.
Gentlemen, any questions on the board?
I'm all for it. Starting with the influx of proposals that we've had and some of the difficulties we've had in getting the work done that we approved, I definitely look forward to a 180-day or even a 365-day moratorium.
This is 180 days.
I have an idea, it's 180.
Or until the town's able to.
But that'll give, that'll give us time to research regulations in the joining towns and come up with something that's a little more enforceable than will let us handle future applications maybe a little bit better.
Gentlemen?
A question, Doug.
Yes.
So after 180 days, we have a new set of thorough and thick regulations. Is that something that has to go to fall town meeting or is it just approved at a board meeting?
That would also have to be approved at a town meeting.
Okay. You're shooting for the...
Yes, my deadline is for fall town meeting to have this done, yes.
Okay. It'd be helpful if you could compile a list of those that are approved but not built?
I already have a list prepared, I can send it to them.
Their end deadline, when they're permitted to?
Yes.
Including the COVID? You have the...
Yes.
The tolling from the governor's order?
Yes.
You gotta add that to it, so...
Absolutely.
Just curious as to what, you know...
I can have that emailed, that's important.
Thank you.
Gentlemen on the board, any other questions for Doug? Folks in the audience, pro or con? Yes, sir, please get up and introduce yourself.
That was Thomas. I am not opposed of these potential 19 solar farms. The issue I have is two things. The clearcutting of forestry, 40, 50, 60 acres, that's a lot for this little town of Cushinget. Also, are we protecting these wetlands? We know there's a, there's a problem with these companies right off the bat, coming into town, building on our wetlands, not doing things up to standards, up to codes. I really think we need to dig deep, look at these companies, and get a better benefit than just taxes from these companies that want to come in and develop this land. That's all I have to add to this, and I'm not opposed. I just, I think we need to do a little bit better homework. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak, for or against?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Yes, David DeRoche, 1399 Main Street, Cushinget. Except a question, it says it has 19 large-scale ground-mounted solar farms approved already. How is the moratorium going to affect those 19 large-scale ground-mounted solar farms? Are they going to continue with the process as the moratorium is? Are they affected by it? Are they stopped? Are they going to be bound to the new bylaws, I guess, after the moratorium is lifted? So it's just a couple of questions. Maybe three.
So from my understanding of it and from reading deeper into it, once they pull the building permit, they're, they're frozen under our current regulations. Beyond that, if they haven't, we have, and within our set of conditions, we have every right as a planning board to be able to go back if we find something as a detriment to the town of Cushinget. So if we feel the need to go back on a certain project, if we have, have a vote when this goes to a public, public hearing, then we have every right to be able to change certain aspects of the projects that have been approved.
Okay. I know this is a question, you've got 19 approved. Do you know how many acres that's going to take up? Or say, are these 19 all over 20 acres? Are they over 30 acres? Because I hear comments that we're going to clearcut 70 acres of land for a solar farm. Is that like for all 19 or some of them smaller, bigger?
So we do have some that are smaller, some that are less than 1 megawatt. And ones that are less than 1 megawatt are a smaller footprint, so out over on 1209 Main Street, once you get out past the country loop and whatnot, there's a small one back there over near the church. 0165 Nice Lane, which is just approved, is also going to be less than 1 megawatt, I believe it's around 500 kilowatts. That's going to be on a downward slope behind the resident, resident's home. So those are smaller. My knowledge for 0165, for example, they're removing about 10 trees from the property to be able to fit the footprint of the solar field within that. For, there are other larger ones that have been approved and that have gone through already where they're looking at two, three acres. Some of them are going to have to have significant number of trees removed from the property.
Are there any that, like it says, I hear the room is 30, 40 acres. Are there any of those that are on the boards right now?
No, we'd have to, we'd have to total it up. I mean, a number of them are in fields already. So, I mean, there's, they're, they're either being mulled or, but there are no trees. So we'd have to go through each one and, and just...
I don't think there's any that are 50 or 60 acres.
No.
None that are that large.
I have things around town, so it's just...
It's before we get to that point, essentially. So like instead of a developer coming approaching us and they just acquire this 50-acre parcel of land in the middle of the woods and we're limited on what we can do, we'll, we have a bylaw that gives some stricter regulations on what they're able to clearcut and what they're going to have to post insurance for that. There's different things we'd be able to do if we got to that.
Okay, very good. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, I want to say for, just by my faulty memory here, I think there were probably four or five of them that involved a fair amount of tree clean, tree clearing. The rest of them were either smaller or in fields or whatever. So it's not like there's 19 sites that are 10 acres apiece that are going to be cleared of trees. It's not, it's not, not quite that bad.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Doug, do we have those on a map?
No, working on that.
Okay.
Yes, and some of the other laws...
And that would be, that would honestly be part of the research that needs to be done. You know, let's like take a close look at what's been proposed and what the change in character of the, of the land is. You know, how many acres of trees are, are going to be clearcut under, you know, what's been proposed already?
And some of those that we already have that have been in the pipeline for two to six years, they have to renew every two years. They can't get permission to hook into Eversource. That's where some of the biggest challenges are.
They're waiting on the, to reach agreements with Eversource. So my understanding of the situation is Eversource is also in the business of solar fields. So essentially, they, I wouldn't say they're unsure of if their infrastructure can handle it. I think they want to see how much, how many solar fields their infrastructure can be able to currently handle before moving forward with all these approvals and making connection agreement to all these companies.
Anybody else, for or against? Gentlemen on the board, is there a motion?
I make a motion, we support this article and move it to town meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, this also has to go for town meeting, and it also has to pass by two-thirds. Am I correct?
Yeah, is it a zoning bylaw?
Yes, essentially. Yeah.
It does make, it does make a difference whether it's a zoning or non-zoning bylaw.
With that, five-four, zero against. With that, we will keep moving on. We'll go out of the motion to go out of the public hearing and back into the regular meeting.
Motion to go out of public.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. With that, it's 7:00 PM. Item 3, discussion formal for site plan approval for the Cushinget Company testing facility. Doug, what do you have on that?
All right, so we actually have Bill Madden, I believe, coming from JAF Engineering. The title is "Company," doing some work out of their facility over in Manchester, England, I believe, doing a welcome center. So I'll let you speak more about it.
Just come and introduce yourself, gentlemen.
Okay. Borrowing your reason?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Bill Madden, JAF Engineering, also with Ms. Charles Sands. He's the facility manager for the Cushinget Company. What we have done is we filed a site plan for site plan review with the planning board relative to a project that they're looking to develop at their Manchester Lane facility. They're proposing, we have our site plans that we submitted as part of our site plan application to the town. I'm happy to discuss any portion of that with you, as you see, that you may want to hear about. But the project involves the construction of a two-story, approximately 9,950 square-foot building at 115 Manchester Lane where the existing test facility is. We've termed this the visitor center. They, they have an existing structure down there now where they have the hitting bays and the test facilities where they, where they fit people, pros and others for golf clubs and do some various testing on clubs, balls, what have you. Charles can speak more detail about what is, what the functions are of the facility. Our task was to develop the site plan for that, for that facility. Where this project is sited now, they have an existing building that they currently use. It's a little bit cramped quarter, so there's a desire to expand that and bring it up to the level that they wish to operate, operate at. So the maintenance facility portion of the site is also incorporated at, at this particular location. That's all being relocated and removed from the, from this building area, and it's being transferred to another location on Manchester Lane adjacent to the existing, to the existing maintenance facility that's there. This portion of the plan indicates all the existing conditions. Manchester Lane is, Manchester Lane is a relatively narrow way that serves as access for this facility. This building is the current test facility. This is the maintenance structure. There's a, it's a fuel dispensary located here. There's some bin storage that they use there, that they place their fine aggregate, anything that might be used on the golf course, whether it be a trap on the small game course or top dressing for, for the major fairway that heads out, I guess, in a south-westwardly direction. The hitting bays are in this building right now, and now they're really confined to, to that really relatively small one-story building. There's a couple of golf tees, golf tees. But the overall project really involves removing all these structures from this current location, relocating maintenance with maintenance, and constructing a new building in this area here. There's some other minor drainage works that were put in many, several years ago that we're just, we're going to be moving this tee over, so some of this will just be moved over to the east and will continue to use the drainage facility that was constructed at that time. This, once again, this is the existing building that's currently used right now. This, once again, this is the existing building that's currently used right now. We're looking to put a drainage basin in this portion of the site over to the northwest area here. We've got a few test pits out there. We've also filed with conservation and the stormwater, in our stormwater permit with conservation. We filed that on the 27th. We filed with the planning board on the 29th. So our goal would be to try to parallel the two projects together to the degree that can be parallel. Do you still have to have a double hearing on this, correct? Yeah. So, I'll, yeah, I'll be, this is brief, I understand. This is what the new site will look at. Really is just a reconfiguration of the existing parking. There's 29 parking stalls proposed. We have a gravel turnaround area or bus drop-off area. Sometimes there may be a need where they're bringing in a larger group of people, maybe a dozen or two, in an effort to lead parking traffic down Manchester Lane. They would deliver the people via bus, drop them off and park the bus in this crushed stone overflow parking area. Then we have our 39 skull parking spaces here. This is the orientation of the new building as it relates to the existing structure. This structure will be elevated about four feet higher on the first floor than the existing building. That's to have the hitting bays basically at the same elevation as the golf tee that's in front of the building. The test fairway is out here. It runs in the southwestwardly direction. The golf tee that exists in this area now will be reconstructed in this location and that's the drainage line that I talked about, just simply moving it over to the east somewhat. That was put in there seven years ago to eliminate some more problems they had with drainage. It was just a poorly drained area and were able to, from the plan, to move that away. So we're going to service the building with domestic water fire protection, given the size of the building will be required, be protected with automatic sprinklers, better flow test conducted on the fire main. It has adequate pressure and volume to serve the needs of the sprinkler system. Have five sewage disposal systems will be used to dispose of sanitary sewage. We're going to still maintain the existing propane system for, for the fuel system for the heating program. And most of our drainage is all going to be headed in a, I guess, let's call it a northwardly direction. And the first element of our drainage system would be a catch basin. It's going to be located in the parking lot. And what we've done is we've created one sediment for bay to handle this portion of the site up on that northwardly portion of the area to be developed. We have a trench drain with stone in it and we're going to also discharge that toward catch basin and give some manhole actually into that for bay. Then we're going to pipe the drainage from the for bay and achieve our 44% TSS removal required, as required for your stormwater management permit. We're going to pipe that down to the, who knows, the construction detention project. And that's the detention basin that we spoke of. There's a small sediment for bay that we're placing in here. The reason that is being added is we recognize that Manchester Lane drains somewhat to the west over here and that flow or that drainage now goes unmitigated into the area adjacent to the west. We felt that we probably wouldn't be, look favorably part of the even the way it is. So instead of being asked to capture that drainage, we've decided to capture that portion of the drainage, pipe it to a deep some manhole and discharge it, I'm sorry, deep some manhole in this instance, discharge it to a for bay where it will go into our drainage. But we realized that Conservation Commission is the administrator of the stormwater permit. But just for information, that's what we're trying to do there. It's a pretty interesting project. It's going to consume about 2.7 acres of land, but most of it is redevelopment. We had an opportunity to use some of the redevelopment provisions within these stormwater regulations in this town. They seemed a little bit, that we could have done it, but we chose to treat all the runoff from the site with this stormwater management system. I think it's a better, better solution and would avoid any comments or questions or decisions that we might have made that perhaps wouldn't have been agreed to by the commission or their review consultant. So we think it was a little conservative, but you know, it's a beautiful place. They go, they go really, really nice job maintaining the grounds and we just feel that it's commensurate with what goes on out there. So project is, you know, it's a $4 million project, it's pretty expensive, nice addition to the town, we think. And probably want to know what the building is going to look like. Say the best. The last, well, somewhat last. This is what the building would look like from that tee in the front. These are the three new hitting bays that would be part of the new construction. This is the second floor conference area, multipurpose room where lessons or sizing could take place during inclement weather, things of that nature. Nice viewing area that looks out over the fairways. This is the area that we look back toward the parking lot, it's a north view. So it's a pretty, nice contemporary building if it has a good look and blend in there with the building that's currently there. We have a west elevation and east elevation of the narrowings. So it's a pretty attractive building. I think it all looks good and we're looking forward to working with the town and moving the project forward.
Do we have a date for next month's meeting for this?
We do not yet. And I know we spoke on the site together about creating, figuring out a date to set the public hearing for this.
Sure.
That works better. I don't know when you guys want to set the next meeting date officially. What date do you want?
June somewhere. Unless you want to get to it. You have to do advertising in the paper.
Yeah, we won't be able to advertise in the paper until the 19th. And then you're going to be away the 26th in May, correct?
I'll be back on the 18th, so.
Anything up to the last week of May?
That'll be fine.
Want to do the 26th?
Gentlemen, Patrick Cannon has put 26th of May, next meeting. Everybody will sit on that. Our next meeting will be...
In the board of selectmen's meeting room at 6:30.
Okay. Should have all the, you'll have all the advertising done since these gentlemen from the titleless company.
Yes.
We'll take care of the, I think we'll take care of the order notification we have.
Yes, reaching out to the assessors and when that's done, just get the list of meetings done.
I don't know what your preferences in dealing with conservation or stormwater, but I'll provide planning board information as we receive from...
Yes, and I'll be working with Pat too and receiving letters from the conservation agent to address any issues.
Where actually is the end of Manchester Lane? Does it go past, does it go past the facility?
No, no, it does not. It just only stops at the bottom of the hill.
Right. So about how far is it from there to the end of Manchester Lane?
I don't have a scale, but it's got to be a couple thousand feet, I think. There's a fence, garden shack, maintenance facility, and then this building. It's down there, I'd say a couple thousand.
I've never been by.
It's a beautiful place. It's gorgeous.
Yes. What's the, are there any houses even close to that facility?
The nearest, the nearest house is at the...
Right at the garden shack.
Yeah. Just by the entrance. That's a near, it's 138 acres and we're like pretty centrally located in the 138 acres. So there's no real sense in receptors nearby. It's not natural areas. There's not really much anywhere other than the golf facility.
Okay, with that, do you want to make a time for that?
No. Oh, yeah, 6:30.
You want to start the public hearing at 6:30?
Yeah, we'll have them first on the agenda.
Is that okay with you gentlemen?
That's perfect, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to do an onsite with the committee just so we get a feel?
You want to bring your golf clubs too?
We want a demonstration of the iron environment too.
I think Doug is telling us, do you want to go down with Doug? You can get a badge.
I can start setting up the...
Yep.
Would we want to try to coordinate with the onsite with conservation or would you prefer to have your own? It doesn't matter to us. We're willing to accommodate for review wishes.
I've already been there. Just gorgeous.
Yeah. All meetings.
We'll have to settle it tonight.
All right, yeah, we can get that. We'll work out.
Sounds good. We'll be 6:30 on the 26th. When, is that day afternoon, morning day, or is that...
It's Thursday.
It's Thursday. Okay, so we're in good shape?
Yep.
All right, perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Time, Mr. Chairman.
We have, I'm sorry, I haven't got that.
Our next public hearing will be at 7:30. We cannot hold it before then because that's the way it was advertised in the paper. So we're going to do some regular business. You want to get a bug around, take a walk, get a glass of water and coffee and be back here. We'll still be here, but that public hearing for the soil won't be till 7:30. With that, gentlemen, I don't know if you had the opportunity to read the minutes of March 24th, April 22nd, and April 28th.
Martin, we're having enough.
He was absent for two of those. Do you have to talk with him? Yeah, I just don't know if I...
Let's see, everybody was there. Rick was absent on the 24th, 21st. Everybody except David and Mark were there. 28th, everybody but Rick.
If you stay on the 24th...
Say it once again, please.
It was approved, it just needs to, the motion wasn't made at the meeting because we didn't have the, yeah, enough people were at the prior, at the 24th meeting to be able to...
No.
Yep.
So for March 24th, 2022, have you gentlemen had the opportunity to read the minutes?
We have motion to approve the minutes as written.
Was there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, four. Rick was absent. Now we have three things I have to sign in back these now. Next one is April 21st. Everybody was here except David and Mark. Is there a motion to accept the minutes of April 21st, 2022 as written? So, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, for the people that were there.
3, 4, 2, 10.
I was just trying to keep my pragmatic comments.
Actually, the new question's, what was approved, just what changes that we've suggested petition.
And for April 28th, 2022, is there a motion to accept the minutes as written? Everybody was here except for Rick.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for April 28th.
I second that.
All in favor?
Ayes.
All unanimous? With that, do we have any other documents we have to sign?
Yeah, there's one, but I can, so when I began position, you guys signed a paper that made me the circuit commissioner for the planning board. We just need to make a motion to continue having me as the circuit commissioner and then I can have Mark sign the paperwork tomorrow.
Gentlemen, is there a motion to have Doug continue to be the circuit representative?
I would make the motion and have this document continue to be our representative.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. 5, 4. With that, do you have any mail you want to read? We got 10 minutes?
Oh, Chris Lander up there, I'm putting it on the agenda. I'm working with Paul right now. We're coming up with a detailed plan process list for everything. So a Form A, so you come into, what does Joe Small on the street have to do to get a Form A test? Same thing with preliminary subdivision, dependent subdivision, just kind of creating a formula, a sheet that gives like guidance for people. Already started working on the sales sheet for the solar fields. I can add in the number of trees that were clear cut, the expiration date on the special permit, and also the account for the toll.
Like what megawatt?
Yeah, everything. I'll include all that. Actually, we'll talk a little bit more about that, just to kind of hit all the details that you might see in there. Also, starting to prepare an RFP for the master plan and identifying the areas that need to be redone. Most of it, most will be able to still continue to use, not much has changed. A lot of data collection's going to need to be completed. And I'm also creating a timeline for overall completion of the master plan. So certain dates will need a hit to create a master plan committee, have public hearings on the matter, get public feedback on everything. And certain dates will just need a hit along the way. So once I have some clear cut details and working with the town administrator, I'll get all that information.
That's a 10-year master plan, correct?
We would be, if it 10-year wanted by, I just want to make sure with the board of selectmen speaking with them that everybody is on board and saying for 10 years, so we will.
Doug, when you send the RFP, can you add, can you attach what we have now for the documents? Because, you know, some of these companies may be bidding as if we don't have anything.
Exactly.
And there's, that's a plan for doctors to start with.
Yes.
So I mean, numbers that appear in it, not?
Yeah, no, so actually, I, for, he even just put their, you know, I was saying a long time ago, and they put their RFP out for $110,000 for consulting work to do a 10-year master plan.
Do we have to add to budget?
Oh, no, no. But we are, we are working with the state rep and it's looking good that we are going to be securing $25,000 in state, so again, it's getting work.
Any more questions, Doug?
Want to take a five-minute break?
Yep. With that, is there a motion? We'll take a five-minute break, a seven-minute break till 7:30 before we have our next public hearing.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll be back at 7:30. With that, we're reconvening the planning board, back into regular session. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to... Regular session?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. With that, our last thing tonight is Article 27, which is citizen petition to amend the town of Cushing bylaws, Article 6, will conservation or take any other action there too. Is there a motion going to the public hearing?
Okay, going to public hearing. For the soil removal by law by citizen petition.
Is there a second?
Exactly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous for five people. With that, please introduce yourself. Pat, we know who you are, but introduce yourself and tell us what we got to do.
So, good evening. Patrick Cannon, I'm the Soil Board Inspector, and I'm here to tell you about our soil bylaw. And what I'd like to start with is the existing bylaw and then show you the changes that are being proposed by the residents petition. Ultimately, this is a petition by the residents to change language in the existing 2021 bylaw that was passed May 10th at the Springtown meeting.
Everybody see that okay?
So this is the beginning of the 1989 soil removal bylaw. The bylaw for the town of Acushun has not been updated for 33 years. And as we started to... And, um, as we started to get into enforcement at PJ Keating, it became clear to the town that the soil bylaw needed to be amended. So the town went ahead and made some amendments. And the town meeting approved it. The first thing was to change the soil board from department heads to the members of the, of the Board of Selectmen. Um, it didn't seem to make any sense to have seven department heads that may not live in town making decisions for something this important. So that's the first change in twenty-twenty-one. In nineteen eighty-nine, there were only five definitions. And in enforcing the bylaw in town, the definitions were very hard to pin down, and people found ways to work around them. So the twenty-twenty-one bylaw added, I believe, seventeen definitions that helped the town to enforce their bylaw. So the first ones was to define earth removal better than it did, and it was changed to loam, sand, gravel, clay, rock, and bedrock. In red, you'll see rap, which is recycled asphalt product, or other allied products. The blue is what was originally, so it originally said, purpose of the bylaw, earth shall include soil, loam, sand, gravel, clay, rock, bedrock, or other allied products. The citizen's petition wanted to strike out an add rap. They felt that having recycled asphalt defined was important. For the purpose of the bylaw, the board was a soil conservation board, which is now the selectmen. Um, talks about the petitioner, give the definition of a parcel. Um, G was added by the citizens, and this is the purpose of this bylaw and associated regulation is to regulate earth removal operations and land filling operations. So there's been a lot of stories on social media in town that I came here to fill in the quarry and to book Keating out of business. That's not anyone's intention, and by changing this to limiting land filling operations, that takes that fallacy off the table. So if this passes at town meeting, the town of Acushnet will now be regulating anyone who wants to fill in a large-scale operation, fifty acres or more. Um, they want to regulate land filling operations for the protection of human health, public safety, welfare, and the town's natural resources in the town of Acushnet. Further, the provisions of this bylaw are intended to protect abutting property owners from drainage problems that could potentially be created by poorly managed earth removal or filling operations. The next change was to add the definition of an abut. So here, any abut is a property owner within two thousand feet for the front, rear, and side property lines. They added the definition of contrary. So all through the town's bylaws says that earth removal is considered contrary to the best interest of the town of Acushnet, and if you want a soil removal permit, you have to demonstrate that it will not be contrary to the best interest of the town. There was no definition for contrary. They wanted the definition for contrary. In twenty-one, we added the definition for disturbed surface area. Um, do you want me to read these, Mark? You just want to go by them? You just want to?
Folks, let me ask you guys, you want to read this whole thing or just the changes?
Do you want to know what changed in twenty-twenty-one before you know what changed in twenty-two?
Yes.
Yeah.
Folks, this is a public hearing, feel free.
Yes. I, I think people think that this, this twenty-twenty-one bylaw is what's going to town meeting. They don't realize that this was passed on May tenth, twenty-twenty-one. There's been a lot of chatter on Facebook that this is being passed. It's not. There's, there's some, some language changes and definitions from the neighbors. That's, that's what the twenty-twenty-two changes are. I think it's important that everybody knows what happened in twenty-one. So disturbed surface area means a portion of the earth's surface which has been physically moved, uncovered, destabilized, or otherwise modified from its undisturbed natural soil condition. This definition excludes those areas which have been restored to a natural state such that the vegetative ground cover and soil characteristics are similar to adjacent or nearby natural conditions, or B, have been paved or otherwise covered by a permanent structure, or C, sustained a vegetative ground cover at least seventy percent of the native cover for a particular area for at least thirty days. The reason for this was to try and get PJ Keating to reduce the amount of disturbed area they have and, and limit their dust. That's the reason for this definition. And a lot of the, um, changes in the twenty-twenty-one bylaw are directed towards PJ Keating. There was a recent court decision in favor of the town that the town has the right to make zoning reactive to situations and operations in the town. The twenty-twenty-one bylaw was absolutely reactive to what was going on at PJ Keating. The next, um, disturbed surface area is a change by the residents where they took out the word destabilized. It's in blue, and they added destabilized, comma, mined. So they wanted to have the word mined in there because everything just said earth removal or, or sand and gravel. So they wanted to cover the, the mine thing. The rest of the language is unchanged. The next change is in dust suppressants. Um, they changed the word, so dust suppressants are water, hydroscopic materials and non-toxic chemical stabilizers used as a treatment material to reduce. They struck out the word reduce in, in blue, and they've added the word prevent. They don't want them to reduce it, they want them to prevent it. Future of dust emissions, and they added the language beyond the property line. The town has been trying very hard to get Keating to manage their dust and keep it on their property and not let it go to everybody else's property. We have a lot of dust complaints about this, a lot. So, um, dust suppressants there again, but I showed you their change. Um, I guess I doubled that up. Then earth moving activities. Prior to, um, changing in twenty-twenty-one, the thirty-three-year-old bylaw, earth removal was not the act of digging dirt out of the ground, was not the act of screening, crushing, any of that. It was actually removing it from the property. So the town was unable really to regulate Keating's operation because it wasn't earth removal till it went out the gate. We had no control of what they did inside the quarry because of that, the way that was set up. So now, earth moving activities means the use of any equipment for any activity where soil is being moved or uncovered and shall include, but not be limited to, the following: grading, earth cutting, and filling operations. And I'm sorry, that should be in red. Filling operations is an add by the, by the residents. Loading or unloading of dirt or bulk materials, adding to or removing from open storage piles of bulk materials, quarry operations, weed abatement through disking, and soil mulching. So the, the town covered its, its bet on this definition that earth removal is earth removal, um, from stockpiles, from the ground. But there will be a little more when you get to large operations. A lot of this applies to large operations, and we'll get to that definition in one second. Dust control supervisor means a person with the authority to expeditiously employ sufficient dust mitigation measures to ensure compliance with the regulation and any permit or condition issued thereunder. So in the, in the bylaw and in, even in the old bylaw, the town has the right to set special conditions for permits. So, um, we have a site in town that has a problem with dust. We have a site in town that doesn't seem to ever have anybody there who can respond to a dust problem or, or do something immediately. This gives the town the ability to put a special condition in the permit that they have a dust control supervisor, and that they're on site, and they have the ability to make decisions, and that when there's a dust issue, it can be dealt with them. They don't have to call Ireland, they don't have to call, um, Atlanta, Georgia. They make the decision right then and there. There used to be an agreement between the town and, and the quarry that if the wind blew a certain amount, they would shut down. Um, I don't know if that was ever honored. So we now have a definition of high wind conditions, and that means instantaneous wind speeds exceeding twenty miles per hour. Then, um, we made a definition of large operations so that we could carve out the smaller contractors in town, carve out the people with stockpiles that aren't running, um, something more than fifty acres. So large operations means any active operations on property which contains fifty or more acres of disturbed surface area. So not fifty acres that you want to use, but fifty acres that you've already dug up, you're, you're already mining it, graveling it, whatever you're doing, but you've got fifty or more acres open, and that's a, a dust issue, and that's the reason for this. The residents' petition adds to the large operation, um, means any active operation on property which contains fifty more acres of disturbed surface area, or any soil removal or again, filling. They want to be careful of the filling of, of the quarry. Uh, operation with a soil removal or filling throughput by a fifteen thousand cubic yards during the most recent three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day period. So if you remove less than fifteen thousand yards, or fifteen thousand yards and less, you're not a large operation, and you're not going to have to do all of the things that a large operation would do that has fifty or more acres open. The definition of fill was changed for twenty-one. Fill means soil sediment, rocks, stones, or other organic or inorganic material obtained off-site that is used to fill holes, pits, depressions, create mounds, or otherwise artificially change the grade or elevation of real property. Here's a definition of rap. Recycled asphalt products shall mean, rap shall mean asphalt millings, material produced from the milling of roads before repaving, and pieces of asphaltic roadway pavement removed from the roadway surface. Um, the citizens added, want to add, in their petition, the town meeting of twenty-twenty-two, filling of land, the import and use of earth materials on any parcel of land within the town of Acushnet. And then there's a definition for proposed fill material, so that the town can regulate the type of fill material that would come in if anyone decided to fill something like a quarry. So proposed fill material is any geologic, man-made recycled or processed material including its entirety, or as a proportion containing clay, rock, sand, gravel, peat, sediment, material meeting the federal or state definition of solid or hazardous waste, or as toxic, infectious, radioactive, corrosive, contaminated, or reactive material is specifically excluded. There would never be any contaminated soil allowed in Acushnet or into a quarry by this definition. Again, um, I can't back up. It was a duplicate definition of. I thought it was important, there's been a lot of chatter on Facebook, social media, that, um, people are going to have to cover their dirt when they dig a pole, fence post and put the dirt in the ground, that contractors are going to have to cover their stockpiles, um, and it can't be taller than three feet and a hundred and fifty, um, square feet around. So an open storage pile is any accumulation of bulk material which is not fully enclosed, covered, or chemically stabilized, and which attains a height of three feet or more in a total surface area of one hundred and fifty or more square feet. In the process of, of giving out a permit, the selectmen as the soil board have the right to set conditions, and they would have the right to, um, give someone who wants a, a stockpile permit, um, a permit that doesn't require everything that a large operation requires. It's, it's a much smaller, um, application. There was a change in the definition of a property line in twenty-twenty-one, which means the boundaries of an area in which either a person causing the emission or a person allowing the emission has legal use or possession of the property. This is for enforcement purposes. Um, there was no definition, and we weren't able to enforce any dust issues for dust going beyond the property from another person. This one has been in the, um, bylaw since nineteen eighty-nine, the water table, uh, means the spring high water table established from a test pit. We added the word pizometer in twenty-twenty-one. Um, test pits don't work, pizometers are forever. I've used them on projects that I did, and, um, and the level related to a permanent monument on the property. So, um, when we get into this, you'll see that your, your soil bylaw doesn't allow you to remove earth within four feet of the high spring groundwater table. Um, this is the nineteen eighty-nine bylaw. Um, it was very basic language, but it does have, it will not be contrary to the best interest of the town. Um, no, no ruleable operations subsequently conducted under a permit shall continue if contrary to such interests. The citizen's petition, um, wants to add the, the language after no earth removal from any parcel of land within the town and no earth filling operation on any parcel of land within the town except as herein after provided, and only in accordance with a written permit issued by the Board of Selectmen. So you need a written permit issued by the Board of Selectmen to do a filling operation. The Board of Selectmen can grant a permit for such removal and for temporary structure accessory there too, and in accordance with the procedure hereafter set for special permits, no permit for removal or filling, another add by the citizen's petition in red, shall be granted unless the Board of Selectmen finds that such removal or filling, subject to the conditions imposed by the Board, will not be contrary to the best interests of the town. So if the town finds that a filling project is going to be contrary to the best interest, it's not allowed. If they find that, um, earth removal is contrary, it's not allowed. Then they put, uh, subject to the conditions imposed by the permit will not be contrary to the best interests of the town, and no removal, and again, or filling operations, and it's, it's a very redundant filling, but everywhere it says removal, the citizen's petition adds filling. They want to protect themselves from the quarry being filled in with contaminated soil. Nineteen eighty-nine, um, the, the purpose or rule, what shall be considered contrary to the best interest of the town, which will be injurious to the dangers of the public health or safety, will produce noise, dust, or other effects observable at the lot lines in amounts seriously objectionable or detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. Seriously objectionable to who? From thirty-three years ago. Um, thirty-three years later, we know seriously objectionable to who? Objectionable to the people who live in the town of Acushnet. Um, there's been a lot of dust. And then it says will result in transportation of materials and ways giving access to land in question which would cause traffic. So the twenty-one change was, will be injurious or dangerous to the public health or safety, uh, would produce noise, dust, and I'm going to skip the, the red out for a minute, or other effects observable or at or beyond the lot lines in amounts seriously objectionable or detrimental to the use. So it wasn't changed in twenty-two. In twenty-one, I'm sorry. We do get a lot of, um, blasting complaints. Um, as far as we can tell, all of the blasts are, are within the allowed limits. Um, Fire Marshal's Office has, you know, signed off on that. And, um, so the neighbors added vibration and odor. So it's will produce noise, dust, vibration, odor, or other effects observable at or beyond the lot lines in amounts, and they scratched out seriously, um, because that's something that can be interpreted. Serious to who? And they, and it says lot lines in amounts objectionable or detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. Um, number three didn't change in twenty-one. Nineteen eighty-nine, um, basic same stuff about transportation. The change is for twenty-one. Um, the neighbors, neighbors added something that we didn't change. Number four didn't change in twenty-one, but they added, will result in excessive transportation which will cause undue injury to the road surfaces. The next paragraph didn't change, and then, um, number six changed, and it said will have a material adverse effect on the health or safety of persons living in the surrounding neighborhood and, um, or on the use of amenities of adjacent lands. They felt that there wasn't a definition or, or something that pointed to surrounding the area, not just townwide. Um, they wanted to tighten that up. And then number seven, uh, this was changed and approved at May tenth, twenty-twenty-one, will result in transportation of materials in excess of the federal truck weight limits of eighty thousand pounds. And I know that this is a concern to people in the trucking business. I was a trucker. Um, I own two hundred, I mean, a hundred and thirteen trucks. The reason for this is that the number of trucks that come in and out of the quarry in a year, or even in, in a day, travel off the state highway, south Main Street, but then they go on to the, to the towns' roads. The town doesn't get enough money to repair the roads as they are. The roads in Acushnet are in tough shape. Um, year over year, Chapter ninety doesn't provide enough money, and they're constantly taking money from the taxpayers, um, two and a half percent of the time, putting it into trying to pave more roads by reducing the, the weight of the trucks from. By reducing the weight of the trucks from these large operations to 80,000 pounds, it will help preserve the roads in Akushnet. Now, the federal truck weight is 80,000 pounds, Connecticut observes it, if you've driven through Connecticut, they have great roads, they're in really good shape. Massachusetts allows an overweight permit that you can buy, I don't know how much they cost now, they were a couple of thousand dollars back in the day for me, which lets you run at 103,000 pounds. But the town of Akushnet didn't give anybody permission to run 103,000 pounds, but the state did. So by ratcheting this back to 80,000 pounds, your roads are going to be in better condition for a lot longer. 1989, it was very basic on how to apply for an earth removal, what the procedure would be. In 2021, we left this part basically the same, but the citizen's petition wants to add to, any person wishing to fill a property, filling is a big thing in the citizen's petition, or remove such material from a property, so it used to say, any person wishing to remove such material from a property in town shall file an implication. Now it says fill a property or. And then the town wants to know the location of the proposed filling or excavation, including that information. It used to just say, location of the proposed excavation, including assesses plat and lot The next one in 2021, didn't change from 89 for number four, for number five, it changed. The proposed method of performance security to be used shall be a cашуре of $10,000 per acre to secure a permit. Now, that's the citizen's petition request. 2021 approved, approved. The proposed method of performance security to be used of $10,000 per acre, excuse me, to be used, or a performance bond of $10,000 per acre to secure a permit. Right now, the town, in 89, it was $2,000. We have a million-dollar bond from PJ Keating. That million dollars wouldn't scratch the surface if they were to leave tomorrow, or to have the town move their silk pile, or any of those things under an enforcement action. $10,000 an acre is justifiable. Now, it's not $10,000 an acre for your 50-acre law, it's $10,000 an acre for what you have open, for what you've got disturbed. And again, this is to induce you to not have a whole bunch of land open at one time and create dust in town. So if you have a 50-acre pit, and you want to operate two acres at a time, it would be a $20,000 surety, not a $500,000 surety. The next one for 2021 was, number six, a plan and representative profiles of the area covering the permit prepared by a registered professional engineer, from which final grades could be established. In 1989, it was very vague, I really don't want to take the time to read it because it's 33 years old, but the 21 version also requires topographical plans depicting existing and proposed grades. We never got proposed grades, and, you know, approving someone to go out and remove 50,000 yards of gravel from a site but not know what those final grades are going to look like and what the impact is as far as the contour of the earth, is a mistake. And then it asks for a reclamation plan prepared by a professional engineer. The town has been asking PJ Keating for many, many years for a reclamation plan, and they keep delivering a picture of a big blue dot of the quarry filled in with water. That's not what it takes to reclaim the property. Copies of the information outlined above articles shall be filed with the town clerk. In approving the issuance of a permit, the board shall impose reasonable conditions, specially designed to safeguard the neighborhood and the town as follows. And those reasonable conditions, folks, is where you smaller contractors get those reasonable conditions. And I'm going to pick on Mr. Datar for a minute. All right, so you've got a stockpile, and we've been talking about this because this is something that popped up after this was passed, and it came to us, we didn't know you had stockpiled, we didn't know there were people in town stockpiling material, and so if you were going to get a permit for your stockpile, you wouldn't need to do a togo, you wouldn't need to show a finished condition, you wouldn't need to do all those things, you're not digging a hole. All you do is put some dirt in the ground and taking it out. So the town would want to know, how many truck trips a day are you going to bring in and out? But first, they would contact Public Safety. Have there been any accidents in front of, you know, the terrace, you know, spot? No. Or to help, have there been any complaints, odor complaints, dust complaints, any of those things? No. And we know there haven't been because we didn't even know you had stockpiles. There have been no complaints. So this is a very easy permit for people in town to get for small operations. No one's trying to hurry you up. We want our residents to be able to save the money on having dirt be stockpiled in town, not you paid a trucker 25 miles away somewhere. This is a good thing for the stockpile people. You also get a permit. You get a permit from the town that says you can do this. It legitimizes your operation, is what it does. Approved in 2021, the finished leveling and grading shall be indicated on approved plans and submitted to the board. Our law, large operation in town, has never wanted to give us a finished plan. They told us that it was proprietary information, and they didn't want that information out to their competitors to know how much life this quarry had left to it. And then the placing of swales, basins, check dams, topsoil, and planting of vegetation necessary to control erosion. We have had more discharge violations from PJ Keating to the Akushnet River for total suspended solids and other things than you could shake a stick at. There was no requirement in the earth removal bylaw before to require swales and basins and stormwater protection to keep all of that stuff getting out into the Akushnet River. I don't know how much just got spent to clean up the Akushnet River, but it would be a shame to fill it back in again. In 1989, here's what they wanted to note, and they wanted the duration of the operation, removal operation, construction of fencing and other protections against nuisances, and there was a thing about burying boulders, method of removal, hours of operation, routes of travel or transportation of material. We've never been able to get a traffic plan from PJ Keating with a quarry. They've never been willing to supply their hours of operation. They said they were grandfathered, and that they could work 24/7, that they'd been there for 100 years. And then the method of removal. You're going to dig it with a shovel, are you going to dig it with an excavator, are you going to blow things up? You know, what are you going to do? So for the 2022 citizen's petition, again, the duration of removal or filling, there's a big emphasis by the residents on filling. Now, D did not change, and then E, they wanted to add method of earth removal, so that there was no way to say, you know, method of removing what? So method of removing earth. Routes of travel and number of truck trips per day, so truck and per day are new. We asked for traffic and transportation information, but we've never asked for the number of truck trips per day for transportation of material, and their other addition here is both inbound and outbound. And this is aimed at trucks, not at cars and pickup trucks for their paving crews or your guys, you know, not how many times you've driven and driven out of your site, this is above, 10-wheelers, triaxles, and trailer dumpsters, trucks carrying dirt. In 1989, they really didn't say much about controlling drainage, they required to set monuments at the property corner, and, you know, this is a tough one, it's been here since 1989, and it can't apply to the quarry, but it's on the books, is at the conclusion of every day's operation, the vertical bank shall be caved into a slope to protect public It's outdated, it was 33 years old. So I don't know that that really got changed, but what did get added for H was control of temporary or permanent drainage discharge and compliance with Article 9 of the town bylaws. Article 9 of the town bylaws is your stormwater bylaw that was passed in 2007. Keating has been requested to apply for a stormwater permit in 2021 and 2022, and they said their grandfather, they have a NIPD's permit, they only need a federal permit. Well, we have a local bylaw, and this bylaw was passed in 2007. It's been on the books since 2007. And you won't need a stormwater permit for your stockpiles, but if you're running a large operation of 50 acres or more, or maybe even 15,000 yards a year, there may be some earth removal that triggers stormwater. In the stormwater bylaw that's on the books right now, it requires a stormwater permit for a disturbance of 5,000 acres or more, and that's been extremely prohibitive and was ridiculous. If you put in a driveway, you needed a stormwater permit. And since we started enforcing the stormwater bylaw in 2021, a stormwater permit, engineering cost-wise, runs around $20,000 for your pretty basic job, and peer review is running close to $5,000. So to pay $25,000 in engineering and peer review to put in a driveway was obscene. So there's a new bylaw for town meeting, and it's being changed from 5,000 square feet to 40,000 square feet. So that's a big change. So on the set and maintain permanent monuments, the citizen's petition has been added the word boundary monuments at each property corner. It didn't specify what kind of monuments. At the conclusion of every day's operation, the two-to-one thing is still in there, it was left in there from 21, nobody wanted to change it. And then on L, all soil removing, and again, or filling, filling activities that exist as of the effective date of this regulation must apply for a permit within 60 days of such effective date. So this took away anyone being grandfather. If you were in existence when this passed, you had 60 days to apply for a permit if you didn't have a permit. Then we get into active operations. For all active, and this is new stuff, this is beyond the 1989, this was added in 21. For all active operations or large operations requiring a permit under this regulation, the board may consult at the applicant's expense pursuant to General Law 4453G, which is about peer review. The people that work in these boards and even myself, we're not professional engineers, we don't have the expertise to review, other than Dave, to review all of these things. So the state gives us the ability to require an outside professional engineer to review this, and what this says is that you have to pay for it. And the citizen's petition added air quality expert, traffic engineer to that. And then it says, so professional engineer, air quality expert, traffic engineer, and/or licensed site professional, LSP, registered in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, approved of or chosen by the board. Said engineer or LSP, if retained by the board, shall assist the board with analysis of the proposed soil removal activities, so that the board may determine whether such project may, and the citizen's petition, and it said, may result in the removal of contaminated soil, or whether such project may otherwise impact the public health, safety, or welfare, or the environment. Citizen's petition added, such project may be contrary to the best interests of the town, or result in the removal, or again, filling of contaminated soil, so you can't fill with contaminated soil, and impact the public health, safety, or welfare, and they've added, of the residents of the town or the environment, not just the environment. Any appeal of the board selection of a professional engineer, if you don't like the engineer the town selects, you can appeal that to the Board of Selectmen, who in this case is the Soil Board, so I don't know how that's going to work. The board's hearing may be continued as may be necessary to receive any and all applicable and relevant evidence. In all cases, it shall be the applicant's burden to demonstrate that the proposed soil removal will not adversely impact the public, or be contrary to the benefit of the town. The board may deny a permit if the applicant fails to supply adequate materials to evaluate the project, or if the soil removal activities will adversely impact the public, or be contrary to the best interests of the town. Contrary to the best interests of the town is 33 years old, and it's probably the most important part of your bylaw. There wasn't much required in 1989 on C. In 2021, we changed it to, no permit for removal of earth shall be issued by the Board of Selectmen, except as provided in Section 4 below, until a public hearing has been held by the board, notice of which shall have been given by them at least 14 days in advance. In a paper of general circulation published not less than weekly in the town of Akushnet, the posting copies thereon on municipal bulletin boards and mailing of copies thereof to the abutting property owners, and the butters to a butters, and I'm going to read you what it said in 2021, within 300 feet, including those across any streets, and a recommendation has been received in writing from said board. So the citizen's petition strikes out within 300 feet, that's in blue, and adds the words in red, 2,000 feet. So they're proposing that to notify a butters that it would be 2,000 feet. Again, this is intended to be for a large operation. There would be no reason to notify people within 2,000 feet for a stockpile site that there's never been any complaints from anybody, and we didn't even know it existed. And that's where common sense comes in, and that's where the selectmen have the right to set those conditions. This is 1989. Permits automatically expire on the completion of the earth removal. Approval of the permit for a period not in excess of one year can be made by the selectmen without a hearing. And I'm not going to read you the whole thing, but it's been changed, everybody wants to see a hearing. The town's been accused of, you know, being in everyone's pocket, and people are getting permits without anybody knowing about it, and there's no hearings, and that's just absolutely not true. So in 21, it was changed to, any permit issued hereunder shall automatically expire on the completion of the earth removal project for which it was issued, or at the expiration of one year from the date of issue, or upon revocation, whichever shall occur first. Approval of the renewal of a permit for a period not in excess of one year may be made by the selectmen, and it said, without hearing, if the Board of Selectmen after report from the inspector finds that all conditions of this bylaw and permit then applicable have been complied with, and that the work has been carried on continuously in good faith. Citizen's petition, they feel that there haven't been enough public hearings, they feel that it's been behind closed doors, it hasn't. So they've added the language that approval of a renewal permit, of a permit for a period not in excess of one year, may be made by the Board of Selectmen after holding a public hearing, period. All that other language in blue is gone. So if the citizen's petition gets approved at town meeting, it would require a public hearing for every earth removal permit that's issued going forward. Then in 89, very little information on what a permit would not be required for, but it said, no permit shall be required for the following purposes. Moving of earth on an individual parcel, well, a 280-acre quarry is an individual parcel, so that would have been a problem going forward. Part of a cemetery operation, cemeteries were exempt from in 1989, and when such earth is not necessary in connection with the construction of a building being built with a permit issued by the building inspector, the amount to be removed to be limited to the volume of earth necessary to construct the structure authorized by the permit. And then when such earth is not needed in connection with the construction of a private road. It was changed in 2021. So moving of earth on an individual parcel was repealed, and that was repealed under advice of town council, so the town could enforce their bylaw. Then the number three didn't change. So if you want to build a house, or build a building, or, you know, build a strip mall, you can take out all the dirt you need to take out to build that, but if you're going to find a piece of property that has, you know, 100,000 yards of sand you want to take out, and you want to say you're going to build a shed, and you need to take out 100,000 yards of sands because you want it down 50 feet lower, that's not going to fly. It needs to be really in accordance with what the building permit would require. And then when such earth is not needed in connection with the construction of a private road, was what it said, that was repealed by town council as well, because they thought... repealed by town council as well, because they thought constructing a private road could be quite a private road and quite a bit of dirt. So they wanted to regulate that. In '89, the Board of Selectmen could have, without a public hearing, could approve permits without requiring compliance with the conditions set forth in Section 3, and then B1 through B8, for the removal from the site of earth for the following purposes. I'm not going to take you back through B1 and B8. If you go on the town's website and go to Boards and go to Soil Board, the first thing on the top of that is the 2021 Soil Conservation Bylaw. And I would urge you to download it and read it a few times. It takes a few reads to really grasp what it says. And then in '89, it said, "When necessary, as part of a farm, a garden, or nursery activities, and then when incidental to landscaping or similar activities for which building or zoning permits are required." In '21, it stayed the same for the first one. You're exempt for Section 3, B1 through B8, farms, gardens, and nursery activities. So contrary to what you've been told, you're not going to need to get an earth removal permit to fill your raised beds in the yard. You're not going to need an earth removal permit to, you know, plant your rose bushes or to grow tomatoes. That's baloney. And then "When incidental to landscaping or similar activities for which building or zoning permits are not required." I'm reading on social media that the Boy Scouts won't be able to have their mulch sale. That's baloney. You know, maybe next we can require a common victual's license for the Girl Scouts to sell cookies. But this comes from people that don't want to comply. They would like to make as much to do about nothing as they possibly can. In 1989, it said, "Earth removal activities in lawful operation on any parcel of land at the time this bylaw is adopted may continue in less than until abandoned for more than 12 consecutive months." So that's a lot of words for they were grandfathered. So if you were in existence in 1989 and operating, you were grandfathered. The town had a problem with that. So the town's lawyer repealed it. That's no longer in the bylaw. No one is grandfathered. Keating felt they were. We went to court. We spent a year and a half in court, and there was a Superior Court decision that came out that Keating is not grandfathered, that the town has a right to make these changes in the bylaws, to be reactive, but also that when Keating got their property rezoned, that the asphalt plant, the quarry, and the concrete plant were allowed uses. They were no longer a pre-existing non-conforming use, and they lost that grandfathered protection. And the judge ruled in favor of the town. In 1989, it said, "No permit for the removal of earth shall be approved by the Board of Selectmen except upon the condition that the topsoil of not less than four inches in depth shall be replaced or allowed to remain, except that shall be no greater than the depth of the topsoil, if any, shown on submitted plans, and except where due to construction of roads, buildings, or other permanent physical features, such provision is impractical." So they really didn't require much to be put back or left in 1989, and in 2021, it changed quite a bit. So A now says, "No permit for the removal of earth shall be approved by the Board of Selectmen except upon the condition that a drainage layer of not less than 18 inches in depth, with a permeability of 10 to the minus 5, and a cover of topsoil of not less than four inches in depth shall be replaced or allowed to remain." Now, if anybody has been into the quarry, has driven up back by the silt piles, you can see erosion in those silt piles that you could drive a bus through. I mean, it's not just a little bit of erosion. It's wiped out. When they stabilized that, they didn't put any type of a drainage layer in there. There was nowhere for the water to go. It just ran right down the surface and ripped their hydroseed and their vegetative layer right off. And all of that turned into silt, ran down, ran into the quarry, and wound up in the discharge. So 10 to the minus 5, four inches of loom shall be replaced or allowed to remain, except it shouldn't be greater than the depth of the topsoil and all that other stuff of surrounding areas. Then on B, "Every permit granted under this bylaw shall be valid for a period not to exceed one year. Request for renewal must be submitted no later than the end of the 10th of the month following issuance." Town's having a problem with people renewing their permits. They would come in on the day that they needed to apply and expect you to, you know, rush through this and give them a permit. So now they have to apply on the 10th month so that there's time to do it right, have a public hearing, do whatever you need to do. And then "With decisions on the renewal to issue within 30 days of such request, renewal shall be granted based upon compliance with the terms of the underlying permit." So if you haven't complied with your permit last year, you're probably not going to get a permit next year. "Any expansion or material modification of the underlying soil removal activities, as may be determined by the board's agent, shall require a new hearing," and that's been added to for the citizen's petition to add the word "public hearing." In 1989, this didn't change. This is about earth removal being done within 200 feet of a public road, and earth removal being done within 100 feet of a dwelling foundation to prevent cabins and other things. It didn't change in 2021. There was no need to change that. So C in '89 didn't change in 2021, and I believe that the required, oh boy, "The required bond or method of performance security would be used to enforce and force performance of conditions imposed by this bylaw or under this section." And that's part of the reason for the increase in the bond. We have a million-dollar bond from PJ Keating. If we access their bond, we wouldn't be able to do much with it. So it's in here that the town has the right to access a bond if you don't do what you do, and that we have the right to fix it or hire a contractor to fix it and use your money to pay them. This is again 2021, and again, it's a duplicate. I must have been up too late. 1998, "The Board of Selectmen shall establish such fees as it shall find necessary for the administration of this bylaw." So there are no fees in the bylaw, based on what you submit, for what your operation is going to be, what the impacts are going to be to the town, and what type of oversight it might take from the town. Because this has become a full-time job for me to enforce this stuff, and the taxpayers are paying for it. My first year that I was hired, PJ Keating paid $16,000 for their permit, and that covered half of my salary. The following year, Keating said, "Nope. We only applied for a permit last year because we wanted to be nice. We're grandfathered. We're not paying any." They sent us a check for $150. That check still sits in the Board of Health office. The taxpayers shouldn't have to pay to enforce permits that they give out to people who are making, you know, running businesses in the town. "Any fees received hereunder shall be transmitted to the town treasurer. The treasurer pays the bills." So in 2021, we added, "The Board of Selectmen shall establish such fees as it shall find necessary for the administration of the bylaw, including for the issuance of the original permit, renewal permits, semi-annual inspections, complaint inspections, and special inspections." That's how many inspections that there have been, and the taxpayers are paying for it, not the person who's operating a business in town and requiring all this enforcement and other things going on. And again, the money goes to the treasurer, and she puts it in the bank. 1989, "The board inspector can enter," I'm sorry. So it says, "The board or inspector may enter upon the premises involved from time to time to inspect and ensure proper conduct of the work." These words must be incorporated in the permit and appear thereon. I got hired on July 1st of 2020, and I went to Keating probably the third day I was here, had a meeting with their environmental manager, talked about some things, told him I had looked at documents. Went back two days later. He gave me some information and documents that he didn't have on the property. Went back probably three days later, and they told me I was coming in too much. Can't come in. I got hired to spend 19 hours a week enforcing the Soil Board. So I didn't have any other responsibilities. Going there as many times as I had to based on complaints and doing inspections wasn't too much. So "The inspector shall be required to notify the owner or petitioner before making inspections." We used to have to call them and give them 24 hours' notice. And you give somebody 24 hours' notice for an inspection, and then it looks like an operating room when you get there. So now in 2020, and that's a typo up front. It was 2021. "The board or enforcement officer may enter upon the premises involved during business hours to inspect and ensure proper conduct of work." Business hours any day, every day if it has to be. But that's what the bylaw says. I'm sorry. The citizens want to add during business hours. I'm getting ahead of myself. And that would actually be helpful to have that correction. And then "The inspector shall be required to notify the owner or petitioner before making any inspections," and the citizen's petition adds on the site, just so there's no disputes of what we're going to be inspecting with the site. In '89, we had the right to retain an engineer and do all those things. They had to file a statement of how many cubic yards they took out the preceding year. Their annual removal shouldn't exceed the amount stated at the beginning of the year unless the Board of Selectmen, on the advice of their inspector, determine there'd be no adverse effect to the town. That has been exceeded by far at PJ Keating. They're in the million-plus tons a year of removal there. And then "A permit shall be issued only after full payment of all annual fees and charges." So in 2021, B didn't change, but "Prior to the anniversary date of the permit, each petitioner shall specify the number of cubic yards of material to be taken out of his or her pit. On here, at the end of the year, he or she shall file a statement of how many cubic yards have been removed during that preceding year. Annual removal shall not exceed the amount permitted at the beginning of the year." Same language. So the citizen's petition adds that "He or she shall file a sworn statement." And EPA requires sworn statements. It puts a little more pressure on you to tell the truth when you say, "How many cubic yards did you remove that previous year?" And then the citizen's petition adds to "have been removed or delivered as fill material." So again, fill material is here. And then "Annual removal or filling shall not exceed the exceeded permitted at the beginning of the year." So if you have a filling permit, you can't exceed that, and that's a citizen's change for 2022. Old language about violations and permits from 1989. In 2021, "If the enforcement officer concludes that there's been a violation of this bylaw, he or she shall hand-deliver or send to the person in charge or permit holder by certified mail or return of street requested to the address stated on the initial application, or any manner provided for by law or notice ordering cessation of improper activities." In the court case, Keating said that we didn't give them proper notice because we delivered them, and that the prior 33-year-old bylaw said it had to be sent to them by certified mail to another address. This allows us to deliver violation notices, cease and desist, or does anything directly to the quarry, directly in hand, and it's in effect. It doesn't have to go through snail mail and all of that to just have the whatever they're doing to continue. And then this was something that was important to the selectmen. "If a permit holder or other offender persists in such violation, the inspector shall seek the imposition of penalties authorized by Paragraph 17, Section 21D of Chapter 40 General Law through appropriate legal action, and the penalty for moving earth in violation of this bylaw shall be a fine of not more than $200." In '89, it was $50 for the first offense after such warning, and not more than $300 for the second offense. That was $100 in 1989. And Mass Law caps it at 300, so not more than $300 for any subsequent offense. "Each day or part thereof shall constitute a separate offense." It's not a lot of money for a company that made $19 billion last year, but it's something. And if they operate for six months in violation, it's $300 a day of six months that the town can fine them. If the offender persists with a violation, the permit can be revoked by the Board of Selectmen after notice and hearing. In '89, they wanted a copy of the bond to be with the application, the bond amount filled indicated on listed stipulations. "Any soil or loam shall in connection with removing sand and gravel in this permit be stockpiled on the premises." So this is a 1989 bylaw. So in July of 2020, I asked PJ Keating to show me where they stockpiled the loom that they have stripped off of the 282 acres, and they told me that they sold it. It's not on the site. So that was ignored. "As soon as practicable and in accordance with good conservation practices, all stripped areas shall be graded and covered with topsoil and loam, and graded in a proper soil conserving manner. As soon as practicable and in accordance with good conservation practices, and as soon as the loam is restored, it shall be planted with a suitable cover crop to prevent erosion of the surface." This is 1989. So in 2021, the bond is still required. The ability to remove soil and loam is still there. It has to stay on the premises. And then "As soon as practicable and in accordance with good conservation practices, not to exceed 90 days." Now there's a timeline. We've had issues over there that we wanted done, and we're being stretched out, you know, three and four years to get things done. So "Not to exceed 90 days, all stripped areas shall be graded and covered with a drainage layer, topsoil, loam, graded and vegetated in a proper soil conserving manner." This has been on the books since 2021. PJ Keating has ignored this. I'm not going to try and show you the pictures tonight, but their silt pile in the back of the property were never fixed after they arose. They never went back and fixed it. On an inspection, I asked Doug Vigno, their environmental manager, when they were going to fix that, and he said, "Never." He said, "When the asphalt plant opens up, I'll fix that." But they weren't willing. Everything was hinged on the asphalt plant when you tried to enforce something. "We're not cleaning up. We're not sweeping the street. We're not paving anything. We're not doing a damn thing until that asphalt plant is up and running." So this gives a date certain that it has to be done, and it's an enforcement matter at this point. And then in 2021, "As soon as practicable and in accordance with good conservation practices, not to exceed 10 days, as soon as the loam is restored, it shall be planted with a suitable cover crop, approved by the board to prevent erosion of the surface." So we don't want you to put down a bunch of loom and build a drainage site and then not seed it and have it all wash away. So it needs to be done by a date certain, and everything for this quarry needs to be a date certain. They find workarounds for every word in our bylaws. They would tell us that a Mack truck is a Volkswagen. I'm serious. So these are all important things for large operations. You're not going to have to loom and seed your stockpiles, and that, you know, that makes no sense. And then in '89, it says that "Operations can't interfere with natural flow of streams." That remains in '21. And then "No gravel shall be removed," and this is 33 years old. "No gravel shall be removed within four feet of the spring high-water table. This elevation shall be established from a test pit and the level related to a permanent monument on the property, and this information shall be shown on a topographical map." The town has never been given that information, and PJ Keating has not observed, and I don't know how they could, if you're operating a mine, stay four feet above groundwater. It doesn't seem possible, but they operate under this requirement. And then something about boulders from 33 years ago. So in 2021, same language about interfering with a stream. Same language for the four feet from spring high-water table. And there was concern about this, that it's been in the bylaw for a long time, and it is a problem to let people go below your groundwater. Wetlands adjacent to the quarry, because they've gone below the high groundwater table, are draining into the quarry, and the wetlands are going dry. But it's But it still stands there. I don't know how the heck you're going to enforce it, but it's there. Nobody wanted to change it. In eighty-nine, you couldn't leave behind, you know, brush, stones, gravels, piles of dirt upon termination of the permit. They wanted everything graded at the conclusion to a, it says twenty-one, but it's two to one slope as provided in the paragraphs above. And here it says, after the operation has proceeded six hundred feet, the operator has to slow grade and reseed the initial three hundred feet. Can't do that at a quarry. You know, it doesn't work. Something on the books, something the town's not enforcing. They didn't want to remove it. I recommended removing it, but I, I only work here. And then again in 2021, same thing about the, the loam. Same thing about the, the sloping of the pit upon closing. And then still the same, six hundred feet, three hundred feet. It, it can't be, it can't be done in the quarry as you, as you move along. If you sell the property, the license isn't transferable unless you meet with the town and, and the town agrees to transfer the license. In twenty-one, it, it stayed the same. Just meet with the town, provide a new bond satisfactory to the town and you're all set. You don't need a new, a new application. And this is why it was valid and it was accepted at town meeting on nine eleven eighty-nine and seventy-nine people attended town meeting in nineteen eighty-nine and voted for it. And that's it? Do you have any questions with me? I'll answer them if not.
With that, as on all public hearings, the board will ask the first questions, then we will ask the public to ask their questions.
Mark. So town council wanted one person from the citizens' group to get up here and represent this themselves and just say, you know, I'm here from the group. Can we have him get up first? That's what town council wanted.
What is here to speak?
Yep.
You think the decision? Yeah, Chris, you just sue the lower key ad and I'm here to represent the amendments as written to concern citizens, the neighborhoods around Keating as well as the town, the town's best interests and I'll entertain any questions or whatever anyone might have to say.
As always, the board will ask the first questions and the public will ask the next questions. Gentlemen on the board, do you have any questions, those gentlemen?
I just have one question. How did you come up with two thousand feet?
Well, what was the prior?
Three.
Right. So you see the debacle that we have now. I don't, you know, I'm just a little beyond three hundred feet and I'm adversely affected and many residents beyond me are adversely affected when that's in operation. So I just, you know, we felt as a group that it was more applicable than a simple three hundred feet because I know people were notified, but I think that if it had been in place prior to them being allowed to build that where it is, it probably, hopefully would not have happened, wouldn't have occurred, not, not how it is right now because it's clearly a debacle around, you know, these surrounding neighborhoods. It's all about the way the wind's blowing, so. That, that, you know, again, I just thought it was a fairer amount of footage because that, that got, and, and it goes back to the zoning change as well. Nobody was notified, you know, beyond, believe the immediate butters.
I think it was a butters up to a butters up to three hundred feet.
Right, correct. So sure, so it's the same, but we're all, there's many residents beyond that that are adversely affected. The north end of behavior is affected. I mean, it's, you know, and it's not, depending on what they're allowed to accomplish with that, it's not going to get any better for anyone.
Gentlemen, any other questions?
I, I think Pat went through it quite in detail. I understand it a lot better. I like the fact that, you know, the smaller contractors aren't affected. I think this is definitely something that's, you know, pointing towards Keating, which I think is great. The only question I had was the two thousand feet, which you just answered.
Let me ask this, can that be changed at town meeting? The point does come up.
I, I will say about the two thousand feet of butter to a butter. The way I understand the legal construct of that, a butter to a butter situation, which is kind of relates to special permits and other notifications. And a butter is someone whose property actually touches the effect, the, the property that's seeking the permits. And, and a butter to an a butter means somebody who touches one of those butters within two thousand feet. If you're on a butter to an a butter to an a butter, you're not notified, even with this change of wording, the way I, the way I understand it. And I, I think I would like, I'm going to ask for probably a clarification with town council on that.
So this was presented to the bylaw review committee on Tuesday or Wednesday?
Monday.
Tuesday, one o'clock. It's running together, so much going on for town meeting. So this was, yeah, Monday morning at ten o'clock, this was presented to the bylaw review committee. Selectman DeRosa sits on the bylaw review committee. And when this came up, he was concerned about this because it's, it's a little vague of whether or not this applies to just large operations, does it apply to the, to the stockpile guys? And that it's also to New Bedford, it's to Fairhaven, but.
I think, I think that the, the Keating operation versus even a normal moderate operation.
But this isn't just about Keating. So this, this large operation thing though, is also about some of these solar fields. And I get a lot of phone calls from people saying, there's a, you know, there's a fifty acre, can I, can I just explain it? There's a fifty acre solar field going in and I didn't get notified and I live at the end of the street. You know, why didn't they get notified? So Selectman DeRosa had the town administrator call town council and find out if a citizen's petition can be amended on town floor. So a citizen's petition can be amended on town floor and the town is having town council draft an amendment to this setback thing. So it is very clear what it, what it applies to and, and it may not be two thousand feet. But everybody agrees and including the bylaw review committee, that if something that's going to be forty, fifty acres, it would be better to cast a wider net, people need to know. Now today, asphalt plan was running, I had a complaint from Fairhaven and it was legitimate. It smelled. We have all the complaints now on Slocombe Street. Never had them until this was moved. So this is a whole new thing for the town, that a whole new area of people has been affected by this asphalt movement to the front. They've been ordered to cease and desist, but they continue to operate. No matter what we do, even after a judge's order that they needed a permit before they commenced operations, they still open the quarry. We gave them a cease and desist and they did close the quarry. But now they've made their interpretation that the judge didn't mean the asphalt plan and the town's filing for a preliminary injunction to shut down the asphalt plan because the judge, the judge did mean all operations. But, so there, there is a clarification coming up on two thousand feet. It'll come from town council, but there's not a lot of time left before town meeting and the amendment, the amendment will be on town meeting floor.
I, I understand. I just, my, my question was just that I, the way it's worded, I don't think it's going to accomplish what, what they want.
That was Selectman DeRosa's, that was his take on it. And he, he's not interested in having anything vague penalize the residents of a question. And I was told by town council that I, that I absolutely can say that most of this soil bylaw is because of the abuse and the violations from Keating. A lot of this is about PJ Keating. And everyone's been afraid to say PJ Keating because they sued us for violating their civil rights. I have implied immunity as a public employee, so I'm here to tell you, it's all about PJ Keating. Now, when the, when the motion to be changed on town meeting floor comes up, I will forward that motion to everybody so that you know what's going to be recommended on town meeting floor.
And likewise, likewise, the neighborhoods.
But.
So that they understand.
Well, the, the petitioners will know, but you need to get back to me before town meeting and say, I think this, I think, don't wait for town meeting and say.
If the lawyers are going to look at it, it's not, it's not a problem. You know, the, the normal, the normal situation for that type of wording is, and a butter, and a butter, and a butter to an a butter within three hundred feet.
I get that.
Or someone across the street. That normally applies to the special permit or variance.
But we're talking about normal.
Yeah.
And I don't want to say it, but this isn't the new normal.
But I, but, but I, okay. There's going to be a clarification coming. That's good. So at least if everybody understands what they're voting on at town meeting floor, I'm happy.
Yep, and then the moderator attended the, the meeting of the bylaw review committee. And the question was asked as to whether or not the citizen's petition was an all or nothing thing. You know, is this, is this all or nothing? Because everybody agreed that there are changes to this that are good for the town and there are some things that are vague and, and could be, you know, problematic. So the moderator offered, and I'm thankful that he did, that he will actually take each change singly at town meeting. So he'll go to the first paragraph and if it, if it says, the definition of contrary is, there'll be a vote on, on that. So that the good things pass that people want in town and the things that people don't want, they can vote down. But we're not going to lose the entire thing. They, they did a lot of work and I would say that, you know, ninety percent of it is crystal clear. So that's it.
Gentlemen on the board, any more questions?
I want to point out that under the definition of a butter, it's actually written the way you want it to be. It says within two hundred feet of the site.
Right, per the definition.
So that, that does reflect, you know, that there is that, and they will take any opening they get.
I understand, I realize.
I have no problem with the changes. My problem is, is the original document. To me, it's not a hundred percent clear that the Teteras of the world, the Joe Fernandes and other guys in town are not going to be subject to some, say we get a new selectmen and they view it differently and all of a sudden they say, no, but you gotta give us ten thousand dollars.
And I, I can answer that.
It's, it's, section three A says, no earth shall be removed from any parcel of land within the town except hereafter provided. I don't, to me, it's, there's like a gray in there, it's not.
So I, but I can answer that. So it is gray. And I've asked the soil board to post a meeting and to, actually PJ Keating has been calling the town administrator asking if they could come in and meet with their public affairs guy. And Selectman DeRosa was pretty clear that we'll talk to you when you bring in an application applied for a permit, you know, let's do that then. So they're trying to go around that and they want to meet with the town administrator. So I asked that they convene a soil board meeting and that PJ Keating be invited in to talk to the town about what they want to talk about, but in public, not in the town administrator's office and have everybody wonder what's going on. And for that same meeting, invite our stockpile people in and sit down and talk to them and hear what they have to say. And then they can talk about how their special conditions can, can help that situation. So everybody's well aware of it. We didn't anticipate the, the stockpile issue and quite honestly, didn't know about the stockpiles until they called saying, what the heck's going on? You know, I'm going to have to cover my stockpile every day, I'm going to have to pay, you know, ten thousand dollars an acre and all these things. It's just, it's not true. Clearly in the bylaw, the soil board, AKA selectmen, have the right to set special conditions based on what you apply for. And, and knowing that there's been no public safety, no odor, no dust, no nothing for any of these guys, it's, it's, it's pretty A, B, C, T. And, and the permit fee's not thousands of dollars. I'm, I'm told that it's in the hundred and fifty dollar range like it used to be. And I think you'd be pretty happy to get a permit for a hundred and fifty dollars to stockpile material. I don't know anyplace else you can find to stockpile material and, and, you know, do these things. So we're, the selectmen are, are willing to be very protective of the, the town's small business people. Yep.
Gentlemen? How about the public? Would anybody like to speak? Please feel free to help and speak. That's what we're here for tonight, so you understand this. Nobody wants to say anything? Bro, come on. With that, gentlemen, is there a motion?
To adjourn for the public.
I also would like to say too, I agree with what Pat said, you know, it also makes me understand what we're doing here a little more, how it's Keating that we're really trying to put the clamp on instead of, you know, the, the small people in town. And that's where I had my reservations. I was worried about the small person being there at this time.
I mean, I would, I would, I'm not an expert on the soil bylaw, but it certainly seems like there ought to be some kind of tiered application process so that, you know, a smaller contractor or even a farmer that's got a pile of an ore off the back, you know, isn't going to get stuck with, you know, twenty, thirty thousand dollars in, in expenses to, for backup on this permit that they're applying for. That's, that's just a general comment, it doesn't really apply to what, what's here.
Agriculture's exempt.
I, but.
And anything you don't like of the two thousand bylaw.
I understand, but smaller contractors, you know, you've got smaller operations that are, that basically are what this town started out as, but we, a lot of.
We have fall down meeting to, to make any edits that anybody thinks is an issue.
I don't think that that's relevant for what's before us right now, but I, I certainly think that, you know, a lot of the smaller contractors in town could use a little rewording to address these smaller operations. Obviously, a stockpile that Detera has is nothing compared in size to what's happening down.
Well, each one there is thirty thousand yards.
Well, yeah, I, so.
And there's seven hundred thousand yards of silt in the bed.
No, I, I, I understand.
And they're not trucking it away, they're letting it blow away.
And then all I'm just saying is, is maybe in the enforcement or definitions or regulations section, it, it might make some sense to look into a, a tiered application of this so that there's a clear separation between what a large operation is, whatever that may be, you know, and something that's happening with a lot of the smaller contractors in town. That's all. Just a comment.
I, I agree with my fellow board member and I think that the exemptions, there should be more listed. This is all future town meeting, I'm talking about fall down. Things that can be tweaked, you know, like somebody builds a single family house lot, it exempts you for digging the foundation, but I've seen, you know, some properties are tough and they, they bring in five thousand yards of fill and I don't think.
But that would be allowed under the building permit. If you put it in, in the, in, in your plan to build a house.
If you can dig the hole, but you can't bring in five thousand yards to grade the whole site.
If it's part of the building permit, it's acceptable. So it has to be, well, it has to be engineered.
I think there's some real gray in there.
With the initials of metal.
With the wrong people in charge, they could start interpreting things differently down the road, so.
And part of the.
I just would like to see it like Rick said, layered and real clear as day as to what. Because you know, you got your big guy and then all the little guys.
And that's the reason for the, for the soil board meeting is to bring in the stakeholders. Bring them in, let them be with the town.
Well, that's going to be an agreement in verbal, but it's not going to be in writing. I think that this, there are aspects of it.
No, I'm talking as far as what, what's problematic for them going forward. Bring in the stakeholders, hear what they have to say, let them talk about their operations. We already know there's no problem with their operations, there has not, never been a complaint. So, and the, and the soil board can, through legal counsel, decide what's the best way to navigate that. But for now, the, the main thing that the town's trying to achieve was to rein in that monster over there.
Yep, I agree.
And give the neighbors some relief.
Understand.
Anybody else? Bro, come, feel free, I know it's getting late past everybody's bedtime. Gentlemen on the board, you all set?
I'll make a motion.
Make the motion.
I'll make a motion, the planning board endorse the article and push it through the town meetings.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
I'll go.
You for it?
Yeah.
Everybody's for it? Five zero. With that, we will end this public hearing. Do we have any other business?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing at this time.
Back into the regular hearing?
Back into the regular.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With that, our next meeting will be May twenty-sixth at six thirty PM downstairs of the selectmen's.
We'll be meeting the board of selectmen's office.
Okay. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any animals? Thank you, folks, appreciate you coming in tonight.